Good morning and welcome to the Cook County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting on August 9, 2016 in the irregular room. We're in the ITV room this morning. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Any adjustments to the agenda? None? Can I get a motion? Mr. Gamble?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Commissioner Storley? Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Public comment? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to public comment? Hearing none? We'll get Molly settled in there.
There's a spot for you down here, apparently.
Or we could send your badge down. Or we could send it down this way.
I'll come down.
You'll come down this way?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, we are live and we're having a little shuffling of seating. For those of you that are watching us, just a reminder, it is the primary election today, and so we are here. You should be, besides watching us, you should be voting at your local area, so just a little reminder. Consent agenda. Does anyone like to pull anything from the consent agenda here?
Madam Chair, I'd call item D, please.
Okay. Anything else? Can I get a motion on A, B, and C?
I move to accept A, B, and C of the consent agenda.
Can I get a second?
Jenny.
Mr. Moll. Any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Gamble, item D.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item D is the revolving loan fund agreement. And just noting in the document, Brady or Molly, that when we referenced the $50,000, we saw that. And the rate that the revolving loan committee offers on a loan this size is the 2.58%. Because I know that when we're in discussion on that, we have variables on that.
It's the 1% on the tenant key on.
And the other question I have, because this is a form that we use in agreements on all revolving loans, it just, we change the particulars, is are the requirements such as in Section 3, which is the taxes, 3.6 taxes, the borrower and the guarantor have each filed all tax returns? Do we actually, in providing this to the borrower, make sure that they read this and that we've complied with those requirements? And I'm just saying that because this is a document that we use as a standard document with revolving loans, some of the particulars, unless we address those on each individual basis, we may or may not, in approving this, be complying with the requirements. Does that make sense?
Correct me, but I think in some cases, we're requiring them to do it, and we're not necessarily checking everything that they do, but they've sworn to it. They did that. And if it comes back that they didn't, they're in trouble.
And I can speak to that, too, Commissioner Gamble. The obligation to have your taxes filed and the other obligations in that agreement are, they are on the part of, not the lender, but the person getting the funds. And when they sign that agreement, they're agreeing that they read it and made all those promises. And if we find that the promises were made in bad faith, then it's a basis for us to allege breach of the contract and ask for return of the funds. And as to the $5,000 versus $50,000, I did make that correction. I also, at the time that the board packet was due, we hadn't worked out between Karen Blackburn and myself the term of the loan. This is a 30-year term. And I was going to pull it from the agenda anyway, so the consent agenda anyway, I'm glad you did that. Oh, she said, yeah, 20 years.
It's been 30, 36.
Gotcha. And I was going to pull it anyway because I made several corrections. That was one of them, to change the term from 10 or 15 to 20.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Molly, the reason I ask relative to the taxing is that the agreement, based upon purchase of the property and obligation in that regard, just our evaluation is based upon what we know at the time, and if there's something that's different in the final transaction relative to the land, any existing taxes or properties.
And they won't transfer, for example, without the property taxes being paid. So some of those things are going to happen during the transfer, but whether they paid their IRS on April 15th or something like that, we're not necessarily checking on that.
And it just demands, at the time that the document is drafted, that the criteria that defines transaction, if, because we get comfortable with it, and I'm making an assumption there, that those elements that are reviewed by the borrower and that we, you know, basically are making sure that we comply with what we established in the document relative to transaction. So, thank you. With that, I would move that the revolving loan fund loan be approved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Moll. Any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Brady?
First item is just an update, our federal and lieu payments. And nothing special here, no action. It's just that it's such a large part of our budget, and it's good for everybody to understand the history of it. As you can see, a large number in the middle, that's our BWCA payment, which was, this is item 4A. You can see the maximum, what was actually established for a 10-year payment back in 2010, was $2,025,000. And then, especially for new commissioners, Congress then cut that back. I can't, sequestered is what they did. They sequestered funds, remember, a few years ago? Well, this is one of them, they got hit, 7.5%. And they haven't restored that, although you see a slight bump this year, from 1870 to 1887. I don't really know what that's about. I have to go search the congressional record, I guess, to see why that got bumped, $8,000. But we're happy for anything. And they haven't cut it any further. Far to the left there, that's Secure Rural Schools. The first three columns, that's broken out. You guys determine what percentages, so you say 85% is in the first column. That's split. Highway gets half of that, school gets half of that by law. So we got a little bump last year, back up to 395. And then we choose to have 8% that go into Title II, which we never see. It goes to our resource allocation committee, the Forest Service head set up. We have a representative on there, Cook County does, not the board, but Cook County does. I'm not even sure, once in a while I get a report from that. I think Howard Headstrom is the county representative, basically. And then the Title III is the one that you hear all the time, because then you guys decide whether it gets spent, those three possibilities, the emergencies, search and rescue up in the federal forest, or faraway communities. What we're looking at for next year, just talked to NACO, and it's not reauthorized yet. They've been really, they wait to the last second as to whether or not to authorize this or not, this law. So it hasn't been reauthorized yet, but they're hopeful it will be. They say, figure out about a 5% cutback, just as a guess for budget. So I told Dave Betts, because he gets half of that. And then the other one over on the left there called PILT, Payment in lieu of Taxes, that one actually incorporates the other two. And that's why it's a small number for us, it's a big number for the counties, because the formula says, oh, look, you get $1,008 of BWCA, oh, look, you get Secure Rural Schools. And so that turns out to be a fairly small number, 200,000. And it's remained fairly constant, so. That's summary of that. No action.
Madam Chair, Brady? Yeah, just looking at these figures, the report that's handed out to us is a report that tracks the revenues in these three funding sources from 1989. And the highest revenues, which amounted about $3 million, occurred in 2010.
Yes.
And so those revenues that amounted about $3 million in 2010 were from Secure Rural Schools, the TIE BLATNIC, BWCA, and Payment in lieu of Taxes. In 2016, our present year as reflected here, the Secure Rural Schools dropped about 40% in revenue from that high of 2010. And the BWCA TIE BLATNIC dropped 7%. The increase in the PIL, Payment in lieu of Taxes, is up 11%, but with an overall decline in that period of time from 2010 to 2016 of approximately 14%, which amounts to about $411,000. And meanwhile, just for comparison purposes, looking at our revenue sources, which we often talk about, how are we doing on the revenue side? Are we seeing revenues keep pace with inflation or increasing costs or not? That Cook County's budget from 2010 to 2016 has increased 14.2%, which amounts to $2.4 million. So when you combine the lost revenues from these three sources with the increased costs over this period of six years, it amounts to a 41% swing.
Yeah, it's a big factor, because it's so much of our budget.
Yeah.
If you have a $7 million levy, and you're getting $2.5 million from these federal sources, they have no real strings attached other than that Title III. And to have that change, to not go up with increasing costs, that drop $500,000, it's a significant factor in taxes.
And again, it speaks to the point that you just said, as we head into the budget, you know, period is that it's a significant portion of revenues when we look at where we generate revenues or where revenues come in, those sources. Impact on those sources is huge to us as a county.
Yeah, it's the same with the state. I'm looking at that today, but same thing. We had a peak there in 2002 of almost $1.2 million, and since then it's dropped down to about $250,000 or so. And same thing, if that kept up with costs, both of these, it would have a significant effect on our, not, but it goes the other way.
Just one question, Commissioner Moll, if I may, Madam Chair, what year was it that we provided the grant to Chick-wop?
About 2007, maybe.
I was just wondering, because 2010 was the year in which we saw, you know, that whether or not in that year, we were a little bit flush, so we have the ability to do that. Thank you.
Well, that was a pass-through grant for most of it.
Was it?
Yeah. So it wasn't ours. And I mean, if you want to look at seven and eight, we received more than double now compared to what we received in seven and eight. So we're down from 10, but we're also up from last year, so it's disappointing that we have less than where we were peaking, but I'm so very grateful that we have anything at all.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Commissioner Moll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Brady, so with the land exchange, do you know the fiscal impact for us, once that's implemented, so that school trust lands will be in federal control now and the Boundary Waters? So that, I'm assuming that TIE BLATNIC fund appropriation will go up some?
It may. I think it's probably more affected by the assessed appraised value, which happens every 10 years. It would probably affect it some.
But we have no idea what that would be?
I don't.
Yeah.
As you can see, we have a reappraisal every 10 years, so it was 2010 and 2020. See what happens to this overall reappraisal.
Really valuable property.
Yeah.
Madam Chair?
Next item is the General Fund Quarterly Budget Review. And the first page, and just down four items on the second page are what we call our operating departments. And so we put a line underneath the bottom of that. And the rest of those are either grant funds or cash funds that are not budgeted for, because they're either paid for totally from grants, or the cash that we've collected from various sources and simply monitor and use as needed. But I'll just go over some of the highlights on the first page. Over on your right-hand side, you can see the difference, the percentage of revenue actual to budget, the percentage of expense actual to budget, and then the effect total, the percent on a levy. So at six months of the year, you're going to expect to find roughly 50%. Or you're looking for 50% or less on expenses, revenues of 50% or more, hopefully, and that the levy is around 50%. But of course, the variation of when things happen causes lots of variations here. I'll just note some highlights, Department 41, General Finance, 75% revenue. That's because their investments have done a little better than we were expecting. On the expenditure side, we're at 15%, and that's because we budgeted for a cost of living, for payroll. We didn't know, we just put an estimate in there, and now we negotiate it after the fact. Well, we're not actually putting the expenditure in this line item, so that doesn't happen. The expenditure happened amongst all the other budgets, because they actually got the increase for 2016, and it's in every line item. So this is going to change. The next one I'll point out, data processing, the expenditures at 58%, the levy effect is at 67. Well, they haven't collected some of the revenues, over one, their revenues are at 60%. So that's a large part of that. But the cost for MSIS is higher than budgeted, some things have changed since then. We're now getting a rate increase for our state phone services, so that hit here, part of it gets paid from this department. We're now using MNCCC as a service provider, where MSIS was doing it themselves, well, that cost is higher by about $7,500. And then two items regarding our new webpage, Page Freezer Web Archiving, and a semi-silent web tools that made that new website possible. So that will be a little bit higher by year-end. Dropping down to courthouse operations, typically that is a little bit high, the net is, their revenues are not all in, revenues show 30%. Part of it is a transfer, we said we transferred in $25,000 from the CAR fund last year, and that's going to happen by the time we see the next quarterly report. Snowplowing appears to expire in the first part of the year. Veteran's Service Officer, you don't see any revenue there, that's just two down, Department 120, and receiver $75,000 grant. Dropping down to Environmental Health, Department 390 and 393, their two revenue amounts are a little bit low for this time of the year, 23% for Environmental Health. Tim says that's, their MPCA grant has not come in yet. And the wet spring and early summer, people get a late start on a lot of those projects that bring in permits, et cetera. With SCORE Recycling, the revenues there, it really has to do with the market this year. They're not making money on those items. Tim will have a lot more detail on that. Then stop me anywhere if you want to look at one. The next page.
Parkinson, Rick. 523.
523. Let's see. 20% on the revenue, yeah, we hadn't put in the state funding yet, part funding is not there in the revenue. The expenditure, that's the expenditures for whole entire, all that we've approved, but we're not budgeted last year, but we've approved the rest, they've gone along. So it's high as compared to budget, because we did budget this last year.
Thank you.
And then if you turn the page, overall revenues are at 65% in spite of some of those lower numbers, because we did get in our BWCA payment, most of those federal monies are in, which boosts that up. Our expenditures remarkably are, they always seem to be very close to the number, well, that's because most of that is payroll and standard expenses that we know about, and they happen. So that's a 50%, and the total net effect on a levy is at 27%. That's because of those federal revenues that we're getting. So no surprises, basically.
Any questions for Brady?
Any questions here?
Mr. Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Brady. We notice this when we're looking at revenues in Public Health Human Services, that having consistency in how numbers are posted, so that we can, you know, draw inference from our revenue and our expense side is very, very difficult. So I mean, the updates are important, because you have context to be able to explain how these numbers relate relative to comparables in previous year at this point in time. And what we'll hear in, like, Public Health Human Services, normally last year we would have had this money in, so you referenced the BW TIE BLATNIC, revenues came in, so that bumps that revenue side up. If typically we would receive that, you know, later, then we would see those figures different. Simply to say that managing an ever-moving, you know, target is a very challenging thing, and you do a very good job of that, we appreciate the explanation, but it's challenging.
And I will point out that it came in, so it shows up here, the federal monies, but they came in too late for audit. They, usually they're in, they used to be January, like clockwork, second week of January, then they became February, the federal money. And this year it came in in late March, and they missed the audit. We have a 60-day limit, where we accrue 60 days, and it fell outside of that. So that would be an explanatory item in our fund balance, because it missed for the fund balance. And, but, it really isn't a negative on our fund balance. Just as, for the snapshot, as of 12/31, 15 looks like it, but it's there three months later.
And Madam Chair, Brady, as commissioners, just from the fiscal responsibility, the update and what we hear that makes us comfortable is that there's no surprises. In other words, you see all the changing parts in it, but what we're hearing from you is, because we deal with it on a daily basis, is there's no surprises. Yeah. Thank you.
Any further questions? Can I get a motion to accept? Mr. Gamble?
Motion to accept the General Fund Budget Review for the second quarter 2016.
Give me a second. Commissioner Storley? Any further questions? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And the next item is the Veteran's Service Officer Grant. This could have been a consent agenda. It's pretty standard, it's year-to-year. I thought Pat was going to be in today, so I thought Rob was probably going to discuss it, she wants to, but it's the same $7,500 grant for basically the same purposes, and we've been getting for at least a half a dozen years. And the grant is attached, the resolution is attached. So unless there's any questions, I'd ask that you approve that resolution, approving the grant by motion. And, does it have? Yes. Who and I are deciding.
We'll start with discussion, Commissioner Storley?
I have no discussion.
Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Brady, in the review of the budget, you mentioned that veteran revenues were not in. However, it appears that in this resolution, that this pertains to fiscal year 2017.
Yeah, so this is the new one. The last one, she was just going through all the receipts and getting it approved, and I think we probably had the money right now, but didn't get it by June 30th, the fiscal report.
Okay.
It's the state's fiscal year, June 30th.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Seaberton? Madam Chair, I have no questions, I'm ready to speak. Commissioner Moll?
Madam Chair, motion to approve the resolution for the 2017 CVSO grant in the amount of $7,500.
Second.
Commissioner Seaberton, seconds. Any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And we have to canvass the primary election, and it's two, three days, two or three days after the primary elections, so either Thursday or Friday. The canvas board is made up of the auditor, the city mayor, administrator, two commissioners, but any one of those can name someone else to serve, and if they do not, the county auditor can name someone. Typically commissioners are fairly busy on those times. I had to pick a time, so I've already set Thursday at 1:00 PM, get all five of the city court administrators, et cetera, to get everybody here. And if the commissioners want to name someone to come there, otherwise I have a citizen who'd be very happy to serve next time.
Okay, we'll start with discussion. Commissioner Moll?
No questions, Madam Chair. I'd be willing to serve in that capacity if needed.
Commissioner Seaberton? I think you may, Madam Chair. So do you need two people, or do you just need?
It asks for two. We don't, it isn't required, any of these three.
I'd be really happy if Commissioner Moll. What does it involve? I mean, that's a specific question.
It's simply reviewing the results of the election and--
Making sure that you're seized.
Yeah, reviewing the summary statements to any depth that the members want to go, but really it's just looking at the numbers, the canvas reports.
All the control.
We're expecting an update to turn out?
Not really. So far it hasn't. Kind of life with one race. It'll be fairly quick.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Served on this in the past, I think it's going to be legwork this particular round, so I would support Commissioner Moll, serving in the capacity this time.
Commissioner Storley?
Thank you, I would support Commissioner Moll. Awesome.
No, they could use two, you guys. For the slide one? For the slide one. All right, can I get a motion?
Motion to direct Mad Commissioner Moll represent us on the canvas board for the primary election.
Give me a second. Commissioner Storley? Can you go by a second there? Any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brady. Jeff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First item that we have is, we had a busy meeting, a personnel committee meeting last week. And the first item is really, it's about the personnel policy related to split-class employment, that is, when we have an employee who works, has more than one position within their 40 hours. But the action that I'm going to ask for today is related to a specific, related to a specific employee. So our policy, specifically our step policy for employees, is that for purposes of calculating step increases, a year of work is based on full-time equivalency, whether 35 or 40 hours per week. Fact of the matter is, we have some people who are working 30 hours a week who are still considered full-time when we look at our health insurance. So there's language within this handbook that needs to be cleaned up. Part-time and intermittent employees will be considered to have completed one year of service after 1,820-- one year of service after eighteen hundred and twenty hours of work. Hours worked in this context will include regular paid leave, extended, et cetera. So we've got, we've got two good examples and they're treated, they've been calculated differently, not treated differently, they've been calculated differently. One example is Julie Bergman, who works thirty hours in my office and ten hours with Health and Human Services. And she has been accruing her step increases on the annual anniversary, which makes sense. The second employee is Pat Strand, splitting between VSO and Public Health and Human Services, working twenty hours in each of those capacities. And her, her step increases have been calculated on the eighteen hundred and twenty hours. So it's taking her a year and six or seven months to get, to make a step. And she, she asked that we review that. So we did review that. We had a conversation at the Personnel Committee meeting and we, we looked at, for the purpose of calculating steps a year's based on full-time equivalency, we don't have any language in this policy that tells us how to deal with split class employees, specifically how to deal with this. So my first recommendation is that when we come back after the class, the class comp study, that we clean up language within this personnel handbook and we deal with things like that. But what I'm asking today is, is that we, we reset the clock on Pat's step calculation so that she would actually be C four one one, step five, on her anniversary date, the anniversary of her starting work date as VSO of August fifth this year. So we would catch her up, we would actually skip over step four and go straight from three to five and put her back on schedule where she would have been. The, the calculation in the work that she does in Health and Human Services has, has not, has not changed significantly and she's in between that. So we would actually just suggest that her, her step date be calculated August fifth for both of those going forward. So she would be at step five on VSO, she would stay at step twelve with Health and Human Services. Next year she'd have thirteen years of service, there'd be no increase, et cetera, so. Other questions about that? Is there, does that explain the conversation that we had at our Personnel Committee meeting?
Okay, we'll start with discussion. Commissioner Story?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, it's good that you're bringing all this up to date and up to steps and all of that. So I understand that in her Health and Human Services, she'll remain at step twelve.
At the step twelve page, she'll actually be credited for thirteen years, but there isn't an increase on the current schedule till fifteen. So she would, she would accrue the steps on an annual basis for both positions on August fifth.
Thank you. Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you explained, Jeff, this affects two employees at this point in time. And this is sort of how these things happen, is that you find an employee that moves into a position and finds themselves sort of trapped because our policy doesn't find how we treat that individual. And so the Personnel Committee looking at that is entirely appropriate in this context. And I think the reached conclusion in the proposal before the board is a good one. Relative to the language being consistent, certainly language should be consistent so that there isn't cause for subjective interpretation as to which one we go by. Do you have any recommendation or have you had any discussion as to whether the thirty-five or forty per week or the thirty or more is better when we do draft new language?
I would actually just put, put another line in there that says that people working split class would be calculated, who qualify for full-time benefits, which you mean thirty, would be, would, increases would follow the annual schedule rather than the hourly schedule. Something to that, just short and brief, it's outside of the typical rule. It's addressing the fact that we know we have exceptions to the rule. But I, but I think that's the only real way to do it. And part of the reason why I don't want to suggest that language is I don't know what our new schedules are going to look like.
Thank you.
Commissioner Severson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to thank the personnel committee for addressing these two staff. I'm grateful that they're willing to, and I realize that in the evolution of a business or a government, that these things happen. And I'm grateful we're taking care of some of the fairness factors. Very much in approval of this.
Mr. Mull?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Jeff, for bringing this to our attention. It was clearly a unanimous decision, Personnel Committee. It's the right thing to do. Madam Chair, I move that we approve, okay, we'll change request for Pat Strand to C four one one, step five, effective August fifth, two thousand sixteen. Support.
Any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And Madam Chair, this is, this is another conversation that we had. This was a philosophical conversation we had in the Personnel Committee. And it's related to item number C, but Tim asked the question, he said, he said, well, we're looking at land commissioner, parks director, and he asked the basic question, do we see this standing by itself, rising to the level of being a department of its own, a department head of its own? Or do we see this folding under the current planning and zoning department? And I think our cons, our conversation was, we, we felt it fits under planning and zoning. And then we said, well, then the title isn't necessarily descriptive. And planning and zoning is not necessarily descriptive of everything that's going on in that corner office anyway. So we, the suggestion was made and it's, there's a couple of reasons for it. If we call it land services, environmental health is in there, planning and zoning is in there, parks and rec, land commissioner, all those things happen under land services. And instead of us being, instead of that being a department that's restricting people's use by authorizing or denying permits, which is what planning and zoning kind of says, we're, we're turning it into a customer service orientation and really trying to turn the model around and say, we're here to help you do what you need to with the land that you own in Cook County. And so this is just a, a first, first look at the idea of changing the name on the wall over in that corner to land services from planning and zoning.
Okay, we'll start with discussion. Commissioner Mull?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank Tim and Jeff for bringing this idea forward. It's a conversation we've been having for, since, since, I'm sure, before I got here. The, what's done in your office is more broad, obviously, than just being a regulatory entity. And, and I think it speaks more broadly to, as Jeff said, the desire of all of us in the county to, to meet the needs of our constituents, to be a real consumer-oriented service entity, which we're working towards being. So it's, in some sense, a symbolic step, but I think a very important one. And I'm glad we're finally implementing it, so I support.
Commissioner Severson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just that I'm clear, what we're looking at is, I love the idea of, of one, the land services office. I think that makes tons of sense from a consumer standpoint and simple is, is better. I realize the complexity is still there, but it's underneath, behind the curtain, which is where it belongs. So does that mean the assessor's office, I mean, all of this gets rearranged in this new plan? Or this doesn't involve, this is just taking the land commissioner fees out of the assessor's office? This doesn't involve the assessor's office?
Yeah, Commissioner, the.
Did I muddy it?
Yeah, no, exactly. The, and I, and I'll ask Tim to fill in if I don't, if I don't get this right. But we've looked at other counties that have done the same thing. And the land services office, in some cases incorporates the assessor's office, in some cases it doesn't. So it's really, there's a, there's a whole lot of different. In some cases, they've taken the staff from the auditor's office and the recorder's office that work with land documents and put them all into the same office. You still leave the people who do auditing and stuff. We, a lot of the, the answer to a lot of that question is based on the physical building that we're working with.
Right.
So at, at this point, really, we're talking about the addition of, of the, of the staff that we're proposing in item C and making no further modifications at this point in time. But Tim, you can speak to, you can speak to the balance on it. He's got pretty color charts.
I love the idea of adding a parks director. There's no pink on here, Tim. There's no pink on here.
There's no pink.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. As Jeff said, there's, there's several models across the state. And there are a number of counties that are moving towards a land services-based type of method or framework in delivering services. As Jeff said, it, many different parts across the state are, some are very heavy into the, the public land management where there's stumpage for sale, there's forestry going on with the county and that's very heavy with the land commissioner office. In other parts of the state, you know, they emphasize other, other parts. But what I passed out to you here is. Yeah, this, this is actually kind of a loosely put organizational chart that if you look, currently, we have our planning and zoning, which I have contended since I, I took office these seventeen years ago, that planning and zoning is, is a bit simplistic of a name for it. It has always actually provided services as an environmental services office because of the number of functions that are in there. And if you, if you look at the chart that we have, the, the blue boxes actually indicate individual staff members and positions and the green boxes indicate the sections or divisions within the department. And we have currently three main sections in the planning and zoning department. One's the environmental health, the second is solid waste and recycling, and the third is planning and zoning. And this basically just adds a fourth section on to include the land commissioner, parks and trails.
And then it just removes the land commissioner from the assessor's office.
And it's, my understanding, that's already been done.
And that, yeah, but that was, well, because there's no assessor.
That's correct, Madam Chair. Commissioner Severson, it's my understanding, you know, my discussions with, with Jeff and with board members, that this, this process basically started from the board initiating, pulling the land commissioner out of the assessor's position. The next logical step was finding a home for it. And what other functions can it do? Can it, can it function by itself as a land commissioner? What are other complementary types of functions that can fit in with that position? And through the Personnel Committee, there was a, a lot of discussion in terms of the types of activities and including, you know, the, the parks, that we just finished the comprehensive trails plan and, you know, even looking at AIS. There's other, other things that we can continue to look at as well.
Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sitting on the Personnel Committee with Commissioner Bo, we did, as Jeff suggested, a significant discussion on this and the initial discussion was a philosophical one. We're all aware that change provides opportunity and with the change in the assessor's department, it was an opportunity to step back and take a look. And the philosophical element of it is looking at the disciplines and how they've been distributed within county government. You know, we have components that are in the auditor's office, we have components that have been held in the assessor's office. And where does it logically fit? And looking at the organizational chart, which we see, you can see how it, how this makes sense. And so, and the other thing we did talk about, which was the philosophical component of this, is how do we, how do we brand or position ourselves? Any, any brand is substantive to the extent that what, what you intend to deliver in services is, is, is realized. So in other words, if you position, it's like a mission statement. You position yourself to be a, a land services department where all of these components are provided to people and we're here to serve you and, and help you in, in, you know, managing your, your properties. So this just, it all, it all makes sense and it positions us better to be more effective. And with the growing opportunities that we have in parks and trails and things like that, it, it brings that into the organizational structure, which is a good thing.
Commissioner Story?
Thank you, Madam Chair. What rises to the top of the surface for me is, this is kind of an outcome from the comprehensive trails community that we worked on for over two years. And the fact that now we're continuing to do the trails update meeting once a month or however we decide we're going to do that, to further extend parks and trails. And maybe as it looks like right here, we would be adding a commissioner. Now that means there'll be another person added to the, to your office? That's the next one, okay. Shall I wait till the next one?
Please. Okay. So on the agenda, this is listed as information, but it seems like the board is in support of this. I will throw it out there to take action. Just be aware that action means expenses. We will have to change signage, website, other such things, letterhead and all of that. So Commissioner Mull?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for bringing up a good point. It sounds as though we're prepared to support the, the name change. I recommend that we get a proposal back from the department.
For the costs?
Yeah, what, what the estimated costs and any other details that we've left out and then we can take action then.
Yep. Commissioner Gamble?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I would agree, it'd be good to sort of take an inventory of what, what the transition would cost us. And I would further suggest that maybe when we do that, we'd have a pared down, what we could do minimally and then maybe what you would like to see, you know, moving forward. But if we could see it in that context, it would, it would demonstrate sort of sensitivity to the budget. I think our intention is to do it, but recognizing as Commissioner Kirk said, that there's costs associated with this, so.
Sorry to run the conveyor, but I always think of those hidden costs. All right, moving on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So then, that brings us to the point of reviewing the job description classification for Land Commissioner, Parks and Trails Director. We had general support. We all, we all kind of knew that this felt like a good way to be going, to continue the work begun with the, with the trails, the countywide trails plan. It also, Commissioner Mull made a suggestion that the supervisor, the AIS grant supervisor, had no place, had no staff to call home, like the Firewise Coordinator reports to the Emergency Services Director. So we worked that into this position as well to have a, have a staff position for, to support that regular grant. That made sense. We had conversations about what is the split? You know, is this, is this fifty-fifty? Is this sixty-forty? Which is it going to be? And we, we really had to say, at this point, let's just shoot for, for, I think we ended up saying, forty-five, forty-five, ten. Forty-five land commissioner, forty-five parks and director and ten percent for the, for the AIS support. And, and we're going to have to play that by ear because we don't know. But we do know that there were things that weren't getting done from the land commissioner office because it was with the assessor's office that need our attention. Working with, working with the tax department of properties. Right now, we're in the process of, I'm in the process of working with Dave Demer and following through on, on a project that this board authorized back in February, which is working with Chief on a grant to purchase the property that he owns. So work is continuing in the land commissioner, in the absence of, of land commissioner, we're still doing it, but where would that be? And so we came up with the recommendation of C four two two, which is consistent with the need to be able to be out and do some field work. This individual is going to be doing a lot of, the sea-level stuff is a lot of the reading statutes and applying those. This person is going to be coming straight to the board for authorization and explaining those land commissioner transactions. From the parks and trails, we have a framework. We know what it looks like, we know what, we have an idea of what they're going to be working on, but we don't know how that's, how quickly that's going to develop and how wide that's going to get. So recommendations there are hard to put together, but, but essentially, this is, is, and the way that we're paying for this position is that we would be eliminating one position in the assessor's office. That position would be, that FTE would be this FTE. This FTE is going to be classed higher than that FTE, but we're not adding an FTE to do this. this. We are having had a conversation with the previous assessor, having had a conversation with the assessor's office that we have now. Once we fill the assessor's position, if we get somebody who can do technical work and assessing work at the same time, we can, we believe the assessor's office can operate with a staff of three. So to answer the obvious question, is this going to be adding staff? No, it's not going to be adding staff. It's going to be changing one FTE. It'll be a B-level position that we're eliminating and a C-level position that we're authorizing.
Okay, discussion. Commissioner Storley?
Okay, thank you. So with that job description, what do you think the market is like out there for someone in this, that would...
If I wasn't sitting here, I'd be like, where...
Commissioner, we're going to get more applications for this, most of them than any that I've seen in the last year.
Really?
They want to work for Tim.
I've got people asking me, when is that going to be posted, so I can apply.
I support that.
This is not going to be hard to fill.
Okay.
No, and I'm excited because I've hounded Brady numerous times about when are we going to deal with tax forfeited land and with trying to work on housing with the EDA and all the steps that go through for that, and it's just frustrating. And I know that that office has been trying to get up to speed, and so I'm just excited this is going to get dealt with, so. Commissioner Gable?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I would agree. I think that certainly with the former assessor, the former assessor stepped in, and there was a whole lot that had to be done that was mandated by the state. It was a requirement, and to dig through that, and she did an excellent job in doing that, plus the land exchange, plus the creative things with Mr. Sheaf and the tax forfeit lands, there are just so many things that it's hard and difficult for something to do with the degree of intricacy that's involved in such a...
And Sheaf is four years now. I mean, he was here before you and I were elected.
That's right.
And so, if you had to designate a person, it would hopefully take that...
Well, that, and to the credit of the former assessor, she came up with the creative means of doing this, because it was an issue that we wanted to see done, but we had varying positions as to how we would do that and not relinquish some of the things we were trying to protect. So, you know, often referenced that lived experience tells you an awful lot if you're paying attention, and this is an example of how can we do this better? How can we be more proactive in managing our resources relative to the limited tax forfeit land we have? But I think as Commissioners, when we would go into the assessor's office, given the amount of work that had to be done, there was a willingness and there was aptitude and ability, it's just something else on the plate. And this helps us to be better positioned to be good stewards of our opportunities. So I support it. The big thing, when you look at something like this, and I appreciate, you know, Jeff's commentary on this, is that how much is it going to cost us? And so, you know, finding a balance between how we reposition without trying to add additional dollars. I think relative to those occasions when we can look at grant opportunities, again, with a little more time, we can pursue some of those when it relates to the discipline within this position, but...
I think this is going to save us a hundred times over what it costs us, because we're going to get the tax forfeited lands dealt with, we're going to get grants taken care of, we're going to have better servicing to the community. Oh, yeah, it's going to be huge.
Sitting there dormant with potential, but we need somebody to mine that potential.
Absolutely. Commissioner Severson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, this sounds like a very, very good plan. My only question would be the eliminating of a position in the assessor's office, but it sounds like you're getting that information just straight from the...
We added positions, right, as Gary and I came in, because we were falling behind. And so, the work that has been done in that office to streamline everything and make it more effective and efficient, and we're now caught up, is why we have this opportunity.
Great. Awesome. The work's been done. Fantastic.
Commissioner Moll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is, I think, a huge accomplishment for our county to make this step. I got to serve on the Parks and Trail Committee with Commissioner Storley. We spent well over a year with a lot of the community members who are working on parks and trails issues. So when we're talking about quality of life, we're talking about economic development, and as Madam Chair, as you said, our ability to generate revenue from our county resources, managing for timber and other value there, it's a very positive step. And as Commissioner Gable said too, the fact that we repositioned existing resources within the county, you know, and I want to thank the assessor's office for being open and honest to moving that position to take over this role, being the Land Commissioner and then Parks and Trail Director. I'm looking very forward to us developing this role and the Parks and Trail Commission that will advise this person, and we can fully implement the Parks and Trail Plan. Yeah, so if there's no other questions, Madam Chair, I'd be, I would like to make a motion to approve the job description for Land Commissioner, Parks and Trails Director at the classification as C-422, and the board authorized the posting of a vacancy to be filled for this position.
Hang on a second.
Madam Chair, I mean, is that also then directing the Administrator's Office to terminate the other position?
Yeah, well, we would need to do that then, so if you're prepared to do that now...
Yeah, I'd take it all as one motion, just that we're directed to do all of that.
So then I would amend my motion to include terminating the current position in the assessor's office.
Okay. Commissioner Gable?
I'd support that question.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Has there been any discussion in that, so that there's a weirdness?
There will be a reasonable notice.
Yeah, and my point in that regard is just out of respect to the position that our, actually, we take here should be without empathy in regard for, you know, no secrets.
No secrets. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I place this, the next item on the agenda, the support for the EDA housing, simply because that's something that comes from my office, but I know you sit on the EDA Board, and I know we have Mary, the Director of EDA, and Howard here to speak about that, so I don't know who wants to speak to this issue.
I'm going to turn it over to the President of the EDA. We've had several sessions that we've sat down and discussed this, and so I think everyone's aware, but obviously you have more questions since the last meeting to get answered, but Howard will get us up to it.
Madam Chair, Board, thank you again for having us here and considering our request. Do you have the letter there too, Mary?
Oh, I have it on my chair.
So, we have an ask today. There's, we talked about this at the joint work session, and it is to move, keep moving forward with workforce housing project in Grand Ray, it's going to be the order Occupied Houses Seven. We have a letter of support. The City Council, a couple of weeks ago, unanimously passed, and it's, as we talked about at the joint session, we're looking for up to $175,000 local support for the Grand Ray Housing Project. Next week, we are meeting with IRRB, looking at what grants that we can get through IRRB for some of the infrastructure that could meet part of that grant. Our understanding is they probably could do $10,000 per unit. We'll go more after discussion, so that'll buy that down. The up to $175,000 is predicated on what grants come in, because they're still applying for some of the grant monies available in the next cycle, which is, I think, the good sure is in September, October, something like that, October. So, this is a fail-safe, we want this project to move forward, so, but, you know, we are asking for a commitment of up to $175,000, so, you know, that would be the bottom line if anything else fell through. We, I still believe it's a good project, and I get really positive feedback when I explain this project to people from all sectors of the community, so, you know, I believe we're doing good work. I believe that this will, we're poised to be digging dirt next spring.
Good dirt.
Huh?
Good dirt.
Good dirt, yes. So, I ask your consideration and support for the letter. And we did a little, we prompted to wonder about what's the impact of our housing projects. Brady was good enough to put together a little tax summary. If we do these two projects, one, if you remember, the Lutzon Rental Project coming in at 2.3 million, the gross tax on that is, you know, about $19,000 a year. The housing project in Grand Ray, since there's different price points, you know, the total of that would be almost $17,000 a year, more than, more than $2,000 per unit. So, that's twenty-five, almost $26,000 a year in additional taxes coming in through property taxes that aren't there now. It's pretty quick payback.
Thirty-five to thirty-six.
Thirty-five, so. Yeah. It's a little better, yeah.
I'm an engineer, you know, I'm not that good at math. So anyway, so that's the plus side. I mean, the negative side, you know, we have to add some money, but I certainly encourage your support of our letter to One Roof.
Okay, we'll start with discussion. Commissioner Moll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Howard and Mary, for coming here. I've spoken about this project a bit, so I don't want to belabor any points. I know it's widely supported and well-intentioned. My lack of support is not for that, it's for, you know, we have difficult choices to make and limited resources, and that's the only reason for my not supporting that. My question is about the $175,000. I know we had, we went back and forth, kind of ad nauseam, as to who is ultimately responsible for which part of this, and at the current moment, we haven't, we haven't decided that.
Correct.
And so theoretically, the county could be on the hook for the whole $175,000 for us by us supporting this.
The city at their last meeting already agreed to support us on that.
Correct.
They did put in a dollar.
Yeah, so we, at this point, don't have any specifics as to who is...
Yeah, until we get more specificity, you know, what funds we need, number one, you know, if we can get some IRRB money, number two, you know, how the grants come in, so, and how the cost estimates come in, but, you know, the One Roof, you know, their best shot at it is the $175 maximum. The suggestion was made, I think, at a work session, that, you know, if we just raised the levy of the EDA, the EDA portion of the levy, you know, whatever's needed up to the $175, I mean, that would impact the city and the county proportionally, and that is a solution. I, you know, I don't have a hard ask or a hard idea exactly how we do that, but, sorry to be so open-ended about that.
Yeah, thank you. And Jeff also made that suggestion, let's, how do I say this? I think that would be a worse way to go about it.
Worse?
Yeah, because in that respect, the county taxpayers who are further from these projects would then pay respectively more than they would if the city were to be putting forward a portion of this. And so, I know I'm in not a very strong negotiating position at the moment, but I would ask that the county hold firm in asking the city to put up a portion of this money.
Commissioner Severson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I guess I would say that if it was in the EDA hands, a portion of the city would be putting up, because the city, county own the EDA jointly. So this is a really fair way to look at how that would, fair in kind of simple way to talk about that, whose budget it comes out of. And I think the city also pays county taxes, so they're in there too. But I just think this, the risk of $175 with that kind of return is like a really, really, really good investment. The return is like in six years, and that, I mean, any business who's offered that kind of return on their money is usually less. So I'm fully in favor of this. Plus, it solves a huge project, or number one, it doesn't solve the whole issue of affordable housing, but it makes a huge step toward solving that number one problem in Cook County. My number two problem is childcare, but this really, this really helps, and I really appreciate all the smart efforts that have gone into creating this plan.
Commissioner Gable?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that we probably, as Commissioners, received an email notification of a letter that was sent by the city and county officials to the Governor on this issue of workforce housing and just the need, and we've talked about this multiple times, needing housing, rural market is suffering. So there's no question that the need exists. I think in our workshop discussions on this, that looking at how this gets funded, and I appreciate all the work that the EDA has done in trying to put forth a response to an identified need that is well-reasoned and researched and looking for financial partners to help us be able to do this, so that that burden doesn't fall solely on taxpayers. And my understanding in that discussion with the city president, and Brian maybe can affirm this or not, from the newspaper's standpoint, because I thought the newspapers said when the city council approved, they approved an amount which was $175, which was, I think, just an open-end, the amount...
It's the same letter. There'll be three signatures on the letter, city, the county, and the EDA, if you want to do so.
That's right. And I think from the standpoint, and to Commissioner Moll's point, and my concern as well, is that I walked out of that workshop meeting with an understanding that this partnership that we have, that we as a county, and looking at the EDA budget as, you know, the overall budget proposed for 2017, that we would be inclusive of this, aware of this, in setting that budget. So we need to manage, you know, budget overall, mindful of this request, and I would be comfortable with this in the context of $100,000, but not the $175, because if we take a board action approving $175, we basically have said, we're willing to accept that responsibility on word and motion. And I think coming out of the workshop, my understanding was, you know, we're looking at $100,000, and if the city wants to, you know, kick in, and if we find that these other sources reduce that, that's fine, but I think our ceiling should be $100,000, and that would be what I would support, if by way of motion, not the total ask.
Commissioner Storley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate all the work you've done. We've waited a long time for the possibilities of having workforce housing, and it's here now before us. And I think in your grant writing, it'd be really good to have some support, like the county board, the city, and all of that, so I think that's important, and the fact that the tax revenue will more than take care of what we're dealing with right now for the future.
Yeah, I appreciate your comment. It really, you know, as we write, you know, it's not us, we're in partnership with One Roof, but they're really, the grant, the people that make the grants like to see a little local skin in the game. I mean, it's, you know, we've got, it's a big project, it's a couple-million-dollar project, I think, at the top end, and, you know, to get $175, up to $175, is a pretty small commitment, and parsing it out, you know, like Commissioner Gable suggested, it, you know, right now, we're looking at the, kind of, the public support, you know, to One Roof, it's a letter that One Roof then could, you know, send on. I don't know exactly how to rewrite that, to say that, see, the county is only good for 100. It's going to be a little difficult. You just have my commitment, I mean, we know that we've got some money, and we don't have a levy yet, but we've got some money in our budget, you know, for housing, so there's a piece in there. You know, we know that the city is committed to spend, you know, they could, you know, the one comment was, they could write a check if we wanted them to, but, you know, they're looking for the county partnership as well. So I think we've got a good, strong commitment from all the parties that, you know, the $175 isn't going to fall solely on the county taxpayers, it's going to be a shared burden. the, the county taxpayers, it's going to be a shared burden. Um, and it might be, you know, I apologize for being loosey-goosey, but, you know, there's, there's, there's things in the process that have to, we have to make some commitments up front, um, and then kind of tighten it up on the back end. I mean, I'm not real happy to be here saying that, but that's where we're at.
So, being the EDA member that sat through all the conversations, and knowing that this is not a motion to give the EDA $175,000, I will make the motion to support the letter as written. Second, Madam. Commissioner Hamel, you have further discussion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I think that, and I agree, that the local support is, is helpful and required, actually, in facilitating grant requests. I think as to the, the, you know, the, what do you want to call it, the challenge, the awkwardness, or the difficulty in framing the language that shows that, I think that language that simply says that we have a commitment on part of this board to support funding to a level yet to be determined. But I think, because words have meaning and intention is reinforced by motion, by saying 175,000, if we mean what we mean by word, that is a commitment that we have actually said we would do that if everything else fell through. And I think, based upon the discussion in the workshop, or whatever, we can show intention by saying, we certainly support this, and by, you know, the vote of the board, and will contribute our fair share based upon a final assessment. But at point, because referenced loosey-goosey, we don't know what that is, and we're willing to make a commitment to 175 without any certainty, that is a binding commitment. Therefore, my comfort level, I support it, but I do not support a commitment in word and intention through motion to 175,000. That, that's my position. So, uh, my, my motion would be, would be to oppose, uh, simply because of that understanding, words have meaning, and a motion is intention.
And, you know, I, I suggested that in my comments, that, you know, yes, you're correct. I mean, if you're voting for up to 175, that is what it is. You know, I, I think there'll be, you know, be mitigated back from that, but, but, you know, if all things fall apart, it will be 175, and it's, it's right to have that in your mind, but I, I do believe, you know, it will be a less commitment than that.
And Madam Chair, and Howard, and, and again, I, I support this. I, I, I just don't support the language and the motion as framed. And so, uh, because if, if it were tighter, then, then I know what I'm behind, because I can, I, I know with integrity I can support that. But because it is what it is, I'm not willing to accept the 175 solely, and that's what this motion would say we are willing to do.
Correct.
Commissioner Moll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, and just, and to be clear, um, the discussion has been openly had here and at the previous meeting, that this would, this would, uh, be added, uh, one possibility is to be added to the EDA levy, which is county-wide. Um, so to be clear, that, that that's very much a possibility here, that this would be a county tax of $175,000.
Share with the city. County, city share.
Not the city itself, as a city government actually contributing anything. It would be county-wide.
The EDA, on its, county, city, share.
Yeah.
The city and the county own the EDA.
All county piece, I'm a little bit...
Correct.
Right, but, yeah.
Mary?
I have a, a little update that just came in yesterday. I haven't even had the chance to tell my chair this yet. Um, I was, had a phone conversation with, um, Director from the Office of the Minnesota Housing Finance, which is the agency that is requiring this $170,000 match for the $350,000 grant request that One Roof has into them. And the challenge that we're up against is, the due date for the letter is the day after tomorrow. So, what the letter says is, um, that we all are committing to 175,000, not any one individual part of the county, the city, or the EDA. And on, on a, um, a good news note, the call from the Minnesota Housing Finance yesterday was that, um, Cook County has gotten the attention of their office, and tomorrow, we're going to have a conference call with a few folks. We're in planning a visit for potentially September 19th. The commissioner from the Minnesota Housing Finance Office is going to come here and have a public meeting, to which you'll all be invited, as well as any others who want to participate in the conversation about what the needs are in Cook County. And it sounded very encouraging to me that they might be willing to hear that we need more help than what we've already asked for. So, I can't promise you anything by that, but I know that when you get a phone call from the commissioner's office, and they want to come and visit you, it's a good thing. So, you know, um, I hold on to the hope that, that perhaps we can, by, by this good faith gesture of signing the letter, we can maybe then backpedal from the 175 and get closer to the number that Gary's talking about, or Commissioner Hamel, excuse me, and, um, I, you know, it'll be a, it'll be a good day.
And Commissioner Hamel, I don't know in our time in office that we've ever had a letter that we have signed as the board chair and the mayor, in an agreement on a resolution. So, I know that, that there's a concern that this all falls on us, the county, but, Commissioner Hamel?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would offer a friendly amendment, where the amendment where approved letter of support to partner with the city and other agencies for up to 175,000 in local matching funds for One Roof Housing Project, I would be comfortable with that.
We have the back. Madam Chair, I would make the point, we already have the letter that's been approved by the city. There wouldn't be time for the city to convene to adopt a different letter. And the other, the other just point of information I was, I would make is that $37,000 of additional tax revenue is spread over the entire county the same way, and we haven't even determined that we would levy for the EDA portion of this. But, but the, the tax benefit is to all of the taxpayers in the county, because it is increasing the overall, um, tax base for the county.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? Commissioner Sievertson?
I just wanted to reiterate Jeff's point, because it, we, we often, as commissioners, we take responsibility for the expense side of the budget, and we don't often get opportunities to participate in the revenue side. And this is a really great opportunity to solve a number of problems, plus add revenue to our tax base. Not just risk of 175, but there's a pretty, almost 100% sure bet that we're going to increase the revenue. So, that's, that's a piece that I think, you know, we can't stress enough.
Okay, those opposed? We have two opposed. Those in favor? Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Should we do it after we do the vote? Could you, whatever, Commissioner, consider me?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to express that I certainly support this.
No, I, I get it. No, I get it.
I need the particular.
Don't, don't need to be, apologize, I mean, I'm trying to...
I think that's my responsibility, basically. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And so, happy loosey-goosey.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. I've heard willing, willing.
That's official, true.
Thank you very much.
We might not, we already...
That would, that would turn, that would turn tight.
[inaudible].
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. The next item is, um, fairly simple one, doesn't require anything from us. It's using existing routes. It's, uh, there's, it's the, um, a resolution to support the implementation of U.S. Bicycle Route 41, which is going to traverse all of Cook County. Uh, U.S. Bicycle Route 41 will, um, start in St. Paul and go to Canada through the Cook County and Grand Portage. And it'll be using existing routes. Um, basically, it's, uh, it's a, it's a marketing opportunity for the county, but the state is not going forward with this until they have support of all the agencies, uh, who have authority where the route is planned. So, if there are any questions, I think everybody's heard this before. I sent this information out last week, and, and got one affirmative comment from Commissioner Mo. Um, but if you have questions about it, questions about the, I've sat in on the meetings. Uh, Commissioner Dukirk, you've sat in on, on some of the conversations too, at the Active Living Steering Committee. Uh, so I take questions about that, but this, this doesn't require anything except us to say, we'd be happy to have that come through here, which it already does.
Discussion, Commissioner Starlee?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm very pleased that they're developing this, and maybe some of the parts of our trail that aren't developed, they will see as a point of helping develop it, get you down the trails.
Commissioner Hamel?
Question is...
You know, the bike route 41?
Yeah, that's, that's the board. Yeah, I, the only, the only question I had is that, based upon the information that was handed out to us, is that, um, it appears that this, uh, bike route will be constructed using available roadways, so it will not involve private property. That would be my only issue. Excuse me, should I get a drink?
Well, that's, that's correct. It's using existing infrastructure. Uh, it's not making any, any other promises. To Commissioner Starlee's question, there is a hope, there is no promise, that designation will also afford us other opportunities for the future development of the Gitchigami Trail and other trails along that route. Um, there's no promise, there's a hope that, that that's, that, that might open some doors in the future.
Commissioner Sievertson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yep, and just coupling with what, um, you all have said about the hope and aim, that it will increase our opportunities to, um, improve the Gitchigami Trail, to connect all the dots. Um, it feels like this will do that, so I'm really excited about it.
Commissioner Moll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, thank you, Jeff, for bringing this forward. Uh, it's a really, uh, good development for us. It's, it's exactly consistent with our trail plan. Uh, we've designated this as a road bike route already. Um, we have, uh, how, how, different housing options, uh, coming up for people, bed and breakfast, um, potentially other camping opportunities as we go forward for people using the trail. So, I think it's a, a very great step. The, the concern I have is just, and it's for the DOT, as this goes forward, there are going to be private property questions. There have been already, so if we're, if we're, we're going to be broadening the shoulders on 61, uh, there'll be, uh, potential use of eminent domain, and so the general public, I think, will want to have, uh, an opportunity to give input to, uh, MINDOT, as this thing actually goes and starts to be implemented. They'll just want some questions answered, and, and we should encourage MINDOT to then, uh, come up and maybe have a public meeting of some kind, or...
And they've had a couple of public meetings on this already, and they're not widening, and if possible, they're going on public roads off of 61 to minimize the traffic. So, they're not, they do not plan right now to change anything. They just wanted to have a designated trail for people to know when they leave Minneapolis, that they can greatly, we appreciate them to come all the way here on their bikes.
Right, well, and, and to that point, Madam Chair, um, there was a meeting up here, I missed it, and so I apologize. Did I know there was, was there one up here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, there you go.
Sorry. It might have been when you were out of town.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I'll give you that.
The, the other thing, though, is, is there is, there is a need for widening, so this route goes right through Oveland, where there is not a shoulder on a certain portion of that, so...
And, and I, and it's a valid question, Commissioner, and I would simply say that, um, widening of any infrastructure is not going to be done as a result of this designation. It's going to be done as a result of needs identified for MINDOT for transportation purposes. This will be the tag-along beneficiary, and I would assume that anytime they're dealing with eminent domain, that MINDOT would go through, would go through a public process.
Thank you.
Yeah, good point.
Commissioner Hamel?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and that basically was my concern. I think that, that projects that are well-intended and have public, you know, participation, and, and we proceed without, you know, using eminent domain or infringing on private property, that, that's the concern. And we see incidences where an idea sort of, you know, rides roughshod over, uh, people whose property is affected by these things, and in a case where we're respectful of that, and we're able to accomplish what we want, we take every opportunity to try to mitigate those concerns, and I think that's a healthy process. That's my...
We did. There's one road in our county that's off of the main road that's been brought up, and everyone in the Active Living meeting said, we want you to speak to every person on that road, because they kind of like their road to themselves. So, I mean, we had that personal note with them.
Yeah, thank you.
I will make the motion to support the resolution. Can I get a second?
A second now.
Commissioner Moll, each of our hair. Any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes.
And Madam Chair, last item that I have today is, um, kind of some cleanup that we should have caught, uh, back in the late spring, when we approved an out-of-class appointment for Travis Sawyer up at the Highway Department. Uh, we guess, at, at this point, basically, uh, my explanation for that is, is Dave did not know the extent to which Lisa was going to be picking up additional work in coordinating schedules, and, uh, you can read his, the background on this is his justification for this. So Lisa has picked up a lot of stuff due to the absence of Russ Flagstad. Um, long story short, I am proposing a temporary out-of-class appointment. Where is it? Where's the number? Thank you.
C-4.
From C-421, step five, to C-431, step five, retroactive to the beginning of his FMLA leave. Uh, and that was February or March, some point. I didn't track down the exact date, but...
Okay, discussion. Commissioner Moll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, as we all know, um, the Highway Department, uh, upper administration is, is without two people. Um, the hours and additional time that Lisa's putting in warrants at least this. Uh, Personnel Committee was, and I are strongly in support.
Commissioner Sievertson?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, and, um, I agree with Commissioner Mo and the Personnel Committee. Um, appreciate their work on this, um, in support of an excellent employee like Lisa, who's really smart, too. I'm, I'm grateful that she has the ability and the, um, energy to accomplish all she's accomplished, and, and she's a great employee and needs, needs this.
Commissioner Hamel?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, again, sitting at the Personnel Committee with Commissioner Mo, that, as Jeff has alluded to, this is an oversight, and we're correcting, correcting a wrong in this regard. The question I would have is, the, the retroactive, is this consistent with how we've operated in similar circumstances relative to motion by the board?
Yes.
Because that seems...
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioner, I would say it's not inconsistent in, in the year that I've been here. We have, we have tried to establish a policy of changes being effective when board takes action.
Yeah.
But your exact point, that we're trying to correct an oversight, um, we have done that in the year that I've been here, and so I don't think it's inconsistent. It's not separate from this.
And the reason I bring it up, I think, in a situation with another employee, um, we recognize the oversight, and we're trying to correct it, but we're trying to be consistent with policy too, and, and I think in that regard, we held the line. So, I just, it's, it's not that I certainly, it's, it just, we don't want to penalize people because of our oversight, but on the other hand, we don't want to subjectively apply when we will and when we won't, because then we got the answer to other people.
And in that, in that instance, Commissioner, the, I think the, the line was a matter of weeks, and in this instance, the line is six months.
Well, that situation I'm talking about was a matter of months or years. And I'm referencing David Demmer, because that, that was prior to your...
Okay.
Yeah, David Demmer was a situation, and, and that was a very difficult one, because of trying to hold the policy and yet recognizing we needed to correct it. So I just, the, the, anytime we make a motion like this, and we all support it, it's just a matter of saying, okay, what do we say to the people that we told, no, we got to stick with policy, we're going to honor that?
Uh, my suggestion is that the administrator pulls that employee's file and redo's it again with the Personnel Committee to verify that what we did was correct in that situation.
I would agree.
Commissioner Starlee?
Um, I have no further questions, other than perhaps look into it a little bit deeper.
Okay.
Madam Chair, uh, just a, a point of clarification. I, I understand, I'm sympathetic to Commissioner Hamel's point. We had this, we've had this discussion. The, the employee that we're talking about, nor, his position wasn't reclassified. Um, the Personnel Committee at that time, we didn't have a hard and fast rule as to when, um, employees' jobs were to be evaluated. What, you know, and, and now that's been clarified, that there aren't going to be any employees that are in need of reclassification waiting in the wings. Um, so, we, I, I agree that we should relook at that. However, I don't believe that that's an issue. an issue that's going to come up again. And, and to that, Madam Chair, I would make the rec, I would make the motion that we recommend Lisa Starly for an out of class appointment from C four one, C four two one, step five, to C four three one, step five, retroactive to the beginning of Russ Cleggstead's LTV.
I will second that. Commissioner Gable, you have another comment?
Yeah, the situation that, that I referenced, that I think we just need to look at to be sure we're consistent, is that the, they, we did have a policy in place, it's just that the policy wasn't adhered to, and that was part of the frustration. So, it, if, if there is something, and Molly's still here, if there's something that, that protects the integrity of policy and allows us to do this, I have no problem with the intent of this. I have a question relative to consistency, so that all employees know that we, as a governing board, will protect that integrity and process. And, and so, we just better have a firm basis under which we are making this retroactive to a point when we haven't done in other situations. So my recommendation would be, we would clarify that, and, and with that clarification, that we're consistent with policy, then it could be retroactive, if not, then we would make a retroactive to this date, but anyway, I guess-
So you're asking Commissioner Moe to amend his re, his-
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying, I, I think it's, it's an issue, it's a matter of consistency and application of policy, and, and I know we wrestled with that in that particular case that I referenced, and we did have mechanisms in place, we just didn't adhere to it, and we had an employee that was aggrieved because we weren't abiding by policy, so.
Commissioner Moe?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and, and there was another supervisor in question there that wasn't, that also now is very clear as to what that policy is. But I, I agree with it, we should, in policy, and, and know, decide when, when we're going to be retroactive, so clarification there, I think, is warranted. But I also think in this case, reimbursement that's retroactive is warranted, so I would, I would not, if there is a motion being made, I don't think-
You made the motion.
Yeah, I don't, did you make a motion to amend mine?
No.
No, 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 I did, I would just say that's why-
Yeah, I would, I'm, I'm not going to amend my motion to not make her retroactive, I'm not-
And as the second to Commissioner Moe's, I stand by his original motion.
Madam Chair, I would, I would make a, if you read the policy, the policy actually gives the department head the authority to make these out of class appointments without the board's approval. So really, the fact that we're here is because we know this should have been done at the same time as the other one, but, so, I think we are clarifying, we are firming up, we are working towards consistency in the application of policy, and that would be my goal, too, is that when people have a question about how we handle human resources and personnel issues, that they know that it's going to be consistent with the, with the manuals that we have. Right now, our manuals and our policies are inconsistent, so I think we're working towards that. I don't think, this is not inconsistent with, with what we've done in the time that I've been here, and obviously, you know, there's history from before my being there, and I'll look into that and make sure that we incorporate all of this into policy work when we approve a new handbook.
Commissioner Gable?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I appreciate it, yeah. Jeff, and I, I appreciate that, I mean, on the various boards that we sit on, when situations come up that have to do with consistency and application of policy or protocol, that, that's an important part of what we do to build integrity into, into the activity that we do, and I, I support this because there's certainly no question that, that this should have been done, whether it's due to negligence or oversight, both, both are similar in the fact that they took place later than they should have. But I, I support the motion with the understanding that, that we, we seek to get clarification and consistent application.
So we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We are going to momentarily skip break since Jim is here, and we'll move on to six A. And then take our break. Okay. Mr. Minaanen?
I'll defer to Molly-
Okay.
-who's worked on this considerably.
Okay, so, thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. You have two legal agreements in front of you. The first is a joint powers agreement with the state of Minnesota, this, in, in which the county agrees to provide an employee to act as a liaison between Minnesota DNR and the county for purposes of managing major forest fire incidents, incidences. The state, when it asks for this liaison to become active, will, will pay the compensation for the employee. The second, so that's the joint powers agreement, there's also a memorandum of agreement in front of you with the Minnesota DNR, where the county actually names the employee to act as the liaison. Now, this is with the Incident Command System, State of Minnesota Incident Command System. I made some changes to the, both of these, prior to the Board Packet and since the Board Packet. The changes that I made since I put these in the Board Packet are, with the memorandum of agreement, I made the, I changed the termination clause a bit. Right now, it says, effective August ninth, today's date, we're naming this employee and it shall terminate, and the memorandum of agreement terminates October 2020, but we know that Jim is heading towards retirement, so I changed the termination clause. I'll just read it to you. Until such time as employees' employment with the county terminates, or October 31, 2020, whichever occurs earlier, should employees' employment with the county terminate prior to October 31, 2020, and the vacancy is refilled, the county shall appoint and name a new liaison officer. And then, the change that I made to the JPA is just adding a signature block, there was no signature block on the template that the state provided. And I also changed the effective date of that agreement to be August ninth, to be consistent with today's board meeting.
Available for any questions? Hoping that Jim can help me answer most questions. Okay, discussion. Commissioner Starly?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Jim, this is kind of putting the, the whole package together before you leave for the next person to understand their role?
I, it's, one of the arrangements that the Board has supported in the past, recognizing the value of having the emergency manager involved with MinX, the Minnesota Incident Command System. I have valued that relationship. What, what it does for the county is keeps that person apprised of, of practices and how things work with an incident management team, so that when they do come to the county, if they do, we're not all starting from zero in that relationship. The emergency manager would know people, understand the expectations of the team, be able to be a liaison between the community and, and, and the team. The MOA was instituted between Lake County Emergency Manager and the DNR, and, and then also Cook County, to address the fact that in order, in the past, in order to participate, we as employees would take personal leave time to do that, and it, it was felt that it, it shouldn't be that way, let's create an MOA so that the, the employee is still employed, but it's paid for by the state, by MinX.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Gable?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As Jim expresses, it's a valuable relationship and one that we've had that's been ongoing, and your willingness to work with them. I would have a suggestion on the language in the memorandum of agreement, that where it takes, it talks about in point three, dates and hours of service, it says the maximum number of days employee will be provided for deployment will be 20 days per calendar year. When you look at point five under there, the basis under which that hourly rate for compensation is determined is, is based upon a 40-hour week plus fringe. And, and I think in, in Statement Five, I would recommend that when it says in the last sentence, an amount not to exceed the employer, employee's hourly rate plus fringe for 40 hours per calendar week period, that it's consistent with the language in three and it doesn't confuse it relative to assignment. Understand that assignment refers back to whatever's determined, which in this case is 20 days per calendar year, but I think it could consistently impart in clarity if you just eliminate of assignment under five, and then the language is consistent.
Done.
If you know what I'm saying?
Sure.
Thank you.
You just get it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Severson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This looks and feels really good, and I think, and thanks, Jim, for telling us how much you value the relationship, if it makes sense, that, that there would be this liaison position. And I also appreciated the changes that you made, Molly, to the dates and so forth, so that we don't have to go through this whole process, which I think you were probably headed to, again, upon Jim's retirement, to name this new person, that you have the language in there now that will just, is it, am I right, will it automatically, will the new name automatically be in there, or will we, will we have to approve this again upon Jim's retirement?
Well, the way I drafted it, we would, I would, we would not have to do a new joint powers agreement-
Right, right.
We would just have to do a memorandum of agreement, which seems to me like an item appropriate for the consent agenda.
Okay.
Yeah. For some reason, they're asking us for a named employee, maybe for their own compensation policies. That makes sense, if you think about it, too.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Moe?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can I read this whole thing from motion, or can I just say agreement? Madam Chair, I, I, I move that we authorize execution of the joint, the Minnesota, the State of Minnesota Joint Powers Agreement and a memorandum of agreement between the county and the state as presented by the county attorney.
That's-
Support.
Commissioner Gable, seconds. Any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. So we will take a break, and then we will return, and we will need a motion to close and open and close and all that bunch of stuff. We will be back at 10:20. Okay. Jim, do you need that signed right away? Do you need that signed right away?
I bet you there are more people in this room now.
Do you want it signed right away?
It'll be in the county board group.
Molly, can you send those documents to a printer and Jim and I'll go sign them?
Uh, yep.
Jimmy, are you done with all this?
No, I just did one.
Excuse me. I have a moment.
Why, she's 90? Well, I have to eat, I have to-
First few here.
I see.
A different seller, trying to find one.
Right.
Well, you know.
I saw that.
I know what they're supposed to be.
Yeah, yeah, no, we should take a break.
Sometimes, you know.
Is that you?
Yeah.
Oh, great, thanks.
I see all of that for my-
Yeah.
He would try.
I don't want to interrupt you.
Yeah?
Good, same with you.
Can I print here?
Yeah.
No, I have to add that-
I don't want to interrupt you.
Oh.
But I am, we're just going to give you an update on our-
Oh, yeah. I'm interested in that. Let me just-
Whoa.
Well, they weren't sure. Yeah, I was going to say, is he back working yet?
I heard he was back a little bit, but I don't know.
What was wrong with Ross?
Yeah.
No, I knew, I heard a little bit, then I thought he was probably okay. A long time ago.
Well, he said February or March.
I mean, that, that Dave so shortened that office anyway, it's probably, I, I'm sure Lisa was doing here.
Or worse.
Yeah.
Sort it out, Miss Molly. Anything?
Um, it just keeps coming into my brain and then leaking out, and that's what I know.
Yeah, I get to the point where I have to dump child with memories of all this stuff. So it's, now I'm up like, I don't know, I'm like, hey, it's great right now.
You can't do that, dump child.
People over it, so we have one question.
I remember child with memories of that, and I remember it.
I know this is my favorite time of the year in the county, and I feel like every, it's every day is perfect.
It has, really, I think it has.
Lots of it.
Yeah, well, I like it a little cooler in the, more, first of all, but then I want fall to last for like four months.
Same here, I'm like-
Yeah.
I used to love winter, and now it's-
No, I'm not, so, me, too.
I'm good to fall.
I used to think people that went away for winter were crazy, now I guess I've gone crazy.
I'm getting cars.
I like to be gone for once.
Dancing, hot coals.
Second half of the week.
Catch your pretty-
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I think whenever I travel, it's March.
Winter, hang up, study. It gets to be sloppy and still free time. I just, I, I can't see them.
I just don't like leaving my stuff.
Well, yeah, that's-
It's a real big risk doing your stuff while I live in Septick and-
Oh, yeah.
You got to live here. I don't know if I call them conveniences.
Molly, are you going up to your office or?
I have never shut my, um, down office.
For the what? Oh, you're still waiting for that?
Gary?
Um, yeah, I just want to have you print them. They want me to-
Yeah, no, go ahead, go ahead, but I'll do that, so I, I pop in, you know, because I said I'd pop in.
They're not you?
Well, I don't, I don't worry about-
Because I put that in my letter?
I don't want, I don't worry about the waters.
How long has Russell been gone?
I would say since February.
And what's been going on with him?
He's got pretty bad health issues, and I don't know how long it's going to be.
Wow.
He's tried to do some work from home.
I bet you for Lisa's been on a different climb up there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Wow. I knew, I heard he was sick a little bit, but I didn't know if he was-
What was the phrase, sourd news?
Yeah.
Lucy goosey.
Lucy goosey.
See, that's a problem.
That's the first time I heard you jump a little bit.
Because we've been in there, we're burned, and, and it's because we want to, we say, oh, don't worry about it.
It's will be there.
Just trust us.
It's not.
Oh, shh, quiet.
Yeah.
But yeah, the, the-
Really?
Lucy goosey, that, and, and I noticed you jumped right in on it.
Oh, yeah.
You kind of like the phrase right off.
He's going to have to speak.
I like Lucy goosey when it's in the right context, but in this context, you're saying that.
Okay.
I have, I've heard a Willie Millian here before, I think-
So he's interesting.
Yeah, we do. All I need is this chair.
Awesome.
That's it, that's it, not this chair and this lap, that's it.
Oh, you need to be careful.
And this one.
Just wait, just finish that.
There we go.
Have an interesting weekend.
Oh, I love to, and I love to-
He'll bring some stuff.
Yeah.
If you, if you contact him, he'll give you a nice weekend around your scam.
Okay, awesome.
I never put this thing, but I like to-
No, no, I appreciate it. Oh, yeah, no. All her job is to-
He comes up here, he comes up here, we have here in October, again, to, to basic classes.
You have no question.
So he's up here, I think.
And actually, we're doing it.
Yeah, well, because there is, I can show my staff, the slides, and just tell them, so they have the weekend, the time of year.
I know, but I know. Oh, yeah. Yeah. Nice guy. Perfect. Yeah.
Yeah, I know, but I know. Nice guy.
Have you seen the video online?
No.
They did a YouTube video with him while he's installing, so you go to the website.
Oh, no, I haven't seen it.
You can find it in the video.
Yeah, but I was going to say, I don't know. Real summer's only six weeks.
So real summer's already over?
Real summer is almost over.
On the 15th, July 4th.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just fall.
Was that saying we'd close anymore?
No, not at all. Well, not in this room either. Yeah, they're going to make us. This is something, the whole thing, they're going to have to, they're going to go on another break to wait for us to set back up again.
It might be easier to have a journey in the road.
Right? I've had work that. That won't be that over for you, or you're so all. Oh, I love that. I'm just going to.
All right. And then we're meeting.
I was really hoping that you'd be available.
Yeah. Not by law.
For him, because you don't need to come back after the log session?
What now?
If we do the balance of this and then do the log down?
Is that the last thing proposed?
Yeah.
I still have, I still have, I still have to get the adjournment on tape though. So that doesn't make it. It does not really, I mean, you want, we have to get the adjournment, don't we? That's, that's really up to us. Okay, all right.
So we'll move stuff ahead.
Okay, that wouldn't be easier because I got to take this down and that out and then reassemble everything and.
Yes. Bingo.
So I would finish the balance of it and make a comment.
Yep, there will be an adjournment on.
There will be an adjournment. After I close. Oh, awesome, you can rock.
That makes sense.
We're going to get back to business here.
Here without a word.
You are in the room, which is good enough for me. Because we're having a closed session and being in an environment we're not normally in in this room, we are going to go to Commissioner Concerns, Correspondence, Aniversaries. Then we will close the session and we will adjourn without being on for the public when we come back from the closed session because of taking down all the cameras and putting it back up. It's going to be a difficult situation. So are there any Commissioner Reports, Concerns, Meeting Notes or Meeting Updates?
Commissioner Severson? I just have a Commissioner concern regarding our approval of the term use permit. And I'm still a little confused by it. Since that report, I've heard from a number of people. And what I'm concerned about, let's get right to the point, is our FAR1 land being vulnerable to large concentrations of animals.
Really a discussion with Tim Nelson. Yeah. Because we, they do watch that.
Eighty dogs?
Yeah, he, we did approve for him to have up to eighty dogs. His intention is fifty-five. But that is, that is a discussion to address with Tim. I know he addressed it a little bit in the last meeting. But definitely give him the question and if there's an amendment, I believe it goes to the Planning Commission as a recommendation from us for them to review it.
Okay. So. But could we also add it as a discussion? Although it could come from Tim, but so it's really.
As a discussion, I would like Tim here to answer my questions.
I totally agree.
Do you want it on next week's agenda?
That would be great. And it could be discussed generally, like how many animals.
Can you add Tim Nelson and this?
A question, Madam Chair, I would, I would suggest. I asked Tim in an email to respond to that. And I don't know that, we could certainly have a conversation about it. But we, we only take action on proposed use and we can't take proposed action on, we can't take action on proposed use except on the existing ordinances, which has been done. So if the question really is, do we need to have a conversation about, do we want to modify FAR1 from this point going forward? That's a great conversation.
That's the conversation I'm looking for.
Okay, so that, so that conversation, I would defer, I would say should go back to the Planning Commission and that we should have that, if we want to bring the question up and, and, and I can bring it to Tim between now and then. But we won't be prepared to have that conversation at next week's Commissioner's.
No, and that's fine, and I'm not bringing this up.
The Planning Commission meeting is tomorrow night, so I will bring this up.
Okay.
There's a general concern about.
I think there's a general concern about.
About a condition of the ordinance.
Yeah.
Then we have to review that in the ordinance process.
Yeah.
But in the conditional use and all the interim use, we're really just permitting.
What we already.
Uses what's already on the books.
Exactly, and that's, so my issue is really about what's, what should be on the books to create less vulnerability for.
Commissioner Gable?
Yeah, Madam Chair, see, this brings up, brings up an important point. I just want to be clear. Is the board, is the board recommending that we revise our ordinance? No.
Oh, our ordinance?
No, or is, are, either the cattle ordinance or, or the land use ordinance for FAR1? Are we, is that what we're asked, what's being asked here? Or are we just looking at, looking at one granted permit?
Not one granted permit.
So we're looking at, looking at the whole ordinance.
Yeah.
Specific to cows.
Specific to FAR1 zoning.
And FAR1 zoning.
Take examples.
It could be a pig farm, it could be a, yeah, it could be a perfect pig farm.
And this question did come up a year or two ago with petting pets. Number of animals. Yeah. So I will bring it up again. My question is going to be, can we review FAR1 and how it's designated? I'm not going to pick a specific animal and whether or not they're allowed to be here. We did try to do that during the Planning Commission. We tried to decide is a number of turkeys and the number of cows and number, because they're all different sizes and there's a, there's a unit of measurement rather than a number of animal, there's a unit of size measurement.
Yeah, it's, it's animal units and it's what the Minnesota and US Department of Ag use for zoning.
But I'm just going to ask the Planning Commission if we can review our FAR1 zoning. That'd be great. Commissioner Gable?
Yeah, and to be specific, I mean, if we wanted to review it overall or if it's specific to animals.
Well, that's what tweaked my interest, is that the animals, eighty dogs on that site.
And I think the thing is, Jeff's exactly right, that we are, we are looking at the individual request. We're looking at the policy that defines.
Right.
You know, our response to requests and if it has to do with animals, I think generic in that context that it'd be asking the Planning Commission in FAR1, how do we want to look at, you know, the agriculture designation when it comes to livestock?
Commissioner Gable, this falls in line with us completing our land use guide and how we designated and what we approved in that. We put in a lot of flexibility into that guide and so that's going to be a reference for the Commission.
Sure, and yeah, and there were, there were references to that sent there. I just wanted to be clear what the intention here was.
Okay. Any other meeting notes, Commissioner Gable?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. We all received the MCIT bulletin for the public. MCIT is a risk management insurance company and in their bulletin, they noted, and Brady will determine how this might impact us, but that in looking at their projections for 2017, that the aggregate reduction in property casualty rates of 10.6% and in the, the other was the, an aggregate, aggregate reduction of 6.5% in workers' comp. So those are two areas where we might see some relief. It might be minimal, how it relates to us.
We already received the letter on that.
Well, we're receiving, we're receiving it this year. Our costs are lower department by department, they're budgeted.
Yeah.
I might have that letter.
So it's going likewise for 2017.
Two things with MCIT then is that they announced that they will have a marginal, you know, declare as far as a rebate or a benefit. So that would be an income source and this is an income or an expense reduction. The other thing, and we've had some brief discussion on it, I don't know how much it actually affects us, but it is something in looking at the, at the budget, the overtime final rule that takes place December 1st, how those thresholds affect our employee base relative to budget. And, and the intent, it says employees who meet the duties test as a white collar executive minister or professional but who are not paid a salary of at least $113 per week beginning December 1st will lose the exam status and need to be paid overtime in cash or compensatory time for all time worked in excess of 40 hours. So if we run our numbers on that, to see how that affects us based upon.
Yeah, I'm not sure what affects us much. By the hour except for.
Department heads?
Yeah, I'm sure, Commissioner, we have one employee who may be in question on that and it depends on where the actual final salary numbers come and we'll be, we'll have a recommendation to deal with that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gable?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know you'll be making a note about the public hearing on Monday. I just wanted to make a comment about that. I've expressed some concerns about raising our, our local sales tax by another half a percent, especially given, given the other likely tax increases that are on the table. I have to say though, that the majority of comments I have received from the people in my district have been in support of this thus far. Given if there is a defined list of projects that actually this will be spent on. So I want to say that and for anybody who happens to be watching or read about this, please communicate with us and me in particular, if you're in my district, between now and when we take action on this. It's important that we know in fact where they, where people stand and, and in this case, it appears that at least thus far, I may have misread the people I represent.
Yes, that public hearing is really important for people to show off.
Yeah, I hope people either let us know where you're, where you stand on this or better yet, come to the public hearing.
Commissioner Gable?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Highway Committee, which I sat in, Commissioner Storley sits on, we had discussion on this and looking at both the list of projects, which is quite very comprehensive, and the projections on this and I think in the comments that I had made when we previously discussed it, looking at sales tax and those communities that have instituted this, that if you're coming up this way, which ones would have that higher tax or not? And Jeff mentioned in that meeting that Lake County is behind us on this because they're moving in this direction. So in other words, once you hit the booth, everybody would have this tax. But here's the frustrating thing that we, we can appreciate as Commissioners when we deal with budget, the Highway Department has more things to do than they got money. And, and we're very frustrated, well, our county engineer is very frustrated with how do I spend very little on so much? This is a mechanism that distributes that, that cost to others and as far as those that visit our community, tourism is, is a huge component. And we mentioned in the discussion that similar elsewhere, when tax dollars are used to show people what their dollars are actually accomplishing, that to the extent we allow signs in Cook County, it'd be good to note those places where here's an example of where your money made a difference because we haven't got the funds to do a lot of what we hope to do, so this would be helpful.
Commissioner Gable, I know it's a tough decision. You know, a year ago, we made a decision as a board that I approved. Shortly before that decision, the community members that were most affected by that action had a meeting and Mr. Lyson was there and Jeff was there and 33 of 34 members voted against me voting with this board on the action and I had to explain to the room that 33 people out of 34 is a majority in that room, but it's not a majority of the county or my district, which is not an easy thing to tell a room of people that are opposed to an action and quite frankly, there's still people in that room that don't talk to me today. So it's not easy where we sit and it's not easy to look at these decisions. So I am really glad that you have a very open mind about this because I know how you feel. So thank you.
It's not always open, but I do my best.
I'm giving a comment. Any other release to note or meeting updates? Commissioner Gable, you available tomorrow morning?
I am, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, we do have a public hearing on August 15th. That is next Monday in the Commissioner's room at 6:00 PM to consider the transportation tax in which the Commissioners may be in attendance, which we will be in attendance. And then before Mr. Cameraman shuts off, we have to do my favorite part. We have to do August anniversaries. We have Wesley Higgins with our Highway Department, three years. Jennifer Rue up at Public Health, seven years. Michael Kinderman, again with our Highway Department, one year. Grace Bouchard, nine years in Public Health. And Lisa Care, one year in the Assessor's Office. So I'd like to thank you. For those of you watching, if you have an agenda in front of you, we have a closed session for lockdown procedure and our camera crew, because we are now live, will be leaving and not coming back for adjournment.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
May I interrupt? I'm sorry. Actually, if Josh can stick around just to set up the camera because we, what I'm going to recommend is a closed session to discuss issues related to security and emergency response procedures. However, the statute, the open meeting law does require us to record that and the recording must be preserved for at least four years. So this is different than attorney-client privilege, which should not be recorded.
But we won't be live to the public recording? We're just going to have him recording?
Right, and I just wanted to make sure that that part was made public.
Okay.
And certainly until the motion passes to close the meeting, the camera should be on.
Okay. So I need a motion to close the open meeting and open the closed meeting.
Motion to close the open meeting and move to closed meeting.
Can I get a second for Commissioner Storley? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So we need to delicately turn off the live stream.
You're not eating without feeling as much like a pig.